Hello, everyone, and our City Commission meeting for May 20th will come to order. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Present.
Commissioner Gault?
Present.
Commissioner Wilson?
Here.
Mayor Kaler?
Present. Tonight, Commissioner Abraham is going to lead our invocation and pledge of allegiance. Do we have anyone tonight? Okay.
I'll do it.
Oh, we've already got you a job. Commissioner Gault, would you do the pledge of allegiance?
Sure.
Father, child in heaven, Father, we thank you for today, a beautiful day, a day of opportunity. Father, we pray that we conduct ourselves in such a way that position ourselves that when opportunities present themselves, we can fully take advantage of them with clear thinking, pure hearts, and an attitude to serve. These things we ask in issue as nay. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City manager, are there any additions or deletions?
There are none.
Okay. We have the pleasure tonight of having a ceremony for the Police Department badge-pinning ceremony for Sergeant Anthony Copeland. Assistant Chief Grimes, hi.
Mayor, Commission, well, City Manager, Madam Clerk, audience. It is with great pleasure tonight that I introduce Detective Anthony Copeland. He's been with us since 2006. He started in Baltimore in 2002. He's married with his wife and two children are here, Krista and Blake and Jacob. His father is a retired police officer homicide detective up in Maryland, so he's a legacy. After a very lengthy process assessment center, very arduous, Anthony rose to the top in the promotional process. It's with great pleasure on behalf of Chief Barnhill to bring Anthony before you for promotion tonight.
Glad to have you and the excellent job that you're doing in the Paducah Police Department. Thank you.
His wife, if I would ask her to come forward. Do we have to vote?
We have to vote?
We've already voted.
We did last week.
Thank you. All right, tonight, we're going to have a workshop, and our first item on that workshop, or the only item tonight on the workshop, is the City Hall Assessment and Conceptual Plan. And City Manager, I think you'd like to...
Yeah, I'd like to provide a little backdrop to this. I believe next year will mark the 50th anniversary of the occupancy of the City Hall Building in Paducah. Fifty years is sort of a design life typically for public buildings, and I would say that it's been well-used, well-maintained, but it is clearly showing the effects of 50 years of use. And we have, the last few years, talked off and on about the need to consider some reinvestment in this building if we want it to last another few decades or several decades. We've also talked a little bit about the need to do a total assessment of the building to see both where the needs lie as well as opportunities to gain some improvements in some areas where there have been arguably deficiencies from the beginning, areas including things such as building security, customer accommodation, workflow, so on and so forth. So recall about a year ago, the City Engineer and I came forward and shared some sort of in-house assessment information with you on several of those factors and gave some preliminary very, very general cost estimates of what improvements to the building might be. At that time, we had indication from the Commission that they would like to have more and better information on that, so subsequent to that, we engaged the firm of Bacon, Farmer, and Workman to do a professional assessment, a conditional assessment of the building, as well as some conceptual planning for what would be involved in what I would call a reinvestment in this building to perhaps kick it out another 50 years or 40 years and make it usable as well as arguably better for that period of time than what it has been in the past in some of the respects that I mentioned earlier. So the firm is here tonight to share with you their report. I think they've done a very, very thorough report, have a very good presentation, so on behalf of BFW, I believe that Barkus Oliver is going to make the presentation, so Barkus, if you would take it away. Or Backus, excuse me.
Good evening. It's good to be here tonight, and I'm going to be speaking, but I represent a total of six employees that looked at the building and have been considering it for several months now. What I want to show you is a presentation, approximately 30 to 35 slides, and it's meant to take you through a 30 or 45-minute study of City Hall. We just need to pause and talk about it a little bit. Sometimes you've got to step back and reflect. First, you need to know that this is an assessment and a conceptual planning. We've not prepared any engineering drawings or architectural drawings, but basically, we have reviewed and walked the facility, we have reviewed the original construction plans, we have talked about its usefulness and things that we would like to see improved on it. So we have labeled the presentation renovation, structural repair, and seismic upgrades. What I'm going to talk about tonight is, we're going to introduce who all we are, so you know who worked on this for the city. I'm going to talk about the city concerns that were given to us to start this project. I think it's going to be important to talk about the building history. There's a few things in its timeline that we need to be aware of, and we talk about what does the next 30 years hold for us. We did do an architectural spatial analysis as requested, and I'm going to give you the results of that. We did do a structural analysis as requested, and I'm going to give you the highlights of that report. We also did an architectural assessment, mechanical-electrical assessments. We did a conceptual opinion of costs, and we also gave a conceptual schedule of what a renovation schedule could look like to repurpose City Hall, and then we will summarize. So first, let me do introductions. You heard that Bacon, Farmer, Workman Engineering was engaged for this work. I want you to know that they are a firm that's been in business 18 years. Ron Bacon is our structural engineer. He's been working with buildings for 37 years, and he was directly involved in this work. I represent Markham Engineering. We've been in business in the Paducah area for 43 years. David Urie is our electrical engineer. He has 30 years of building experience. He couldn't be here tonight. Matt Snow is with me. He is a mechanical engineer and has worked for six years in HVAC industry. Myself, I've been in business for 22 years on working on buildings and renovating buildings and constructing new buildings. We had to employ an architect, so we chose a local firm, Peck, Flaner, Grim, and Warren. They have 50 years of experience. Paul King specifically was the one that worked on this project. He has 27 years of experience. All three of our firms are in the city of Paducah, and we're proud to call ourselves Padukans, and we were honored to get to look at this project for you. We've put a couple of pictures on here just to show you examples of our work that we've worked on together. We designed and oversaw the construction of the P&amp;L headquarters just a few blocks away. We also have worked on your city project, the first two phases of the Julian Carroll Convention Center, and I don't know why we didn't put it on there, but we have just completed the new MSU building together. So our group that we've put together for this study has worked together a lot, has also has several years of experience. Your city concerns, what you all told us about the building was lengthy, and I have shortened it for tonight's presentation, but I think the first thing that Rick pointed it, Rick Murphy pointed out to us, was canopy replacement, talking about the canopy that surrounds the perimeter of the building. It is a monument to this building. It is probably one of the most prominent features of the building, and we're going to spend some time talking about it. He also mentioned roof replacement. He thought that that was needed. Building security was very high on the list for the City Manager and Rick. Seismic evaluation, we were asked to evaluate the structure for seismic and what could happen in a seismic earthquake. We were asked to look at the repair of the exterior concrete deck, and that is the deck that surrounds our building, and it's called a podium, was architectural term used for it during construction. So I'm going to refer to it as a podium, but that is that area that makes the roof of our basement. I don't know how many people know this, but our basement is larger than our first and second floors, and so if you're in a basement in an outer lying area, you may very well be out there underneath the canopy area, so we're going to call that the podium and address that. Also, the parking garage and its propensity to flood, we have problems with storm water down there, and also is an indoor air quality concern whenever you have vehicles under buildings that you inhabit. He asked us to talk about mechanical-electrical systems and architectural function of the building. So those were the concerns reported to us. The photographs you see to the right, those are pictures underneath the podium showing you years of patching and trying to stop leaks, and I believe the podium has always been an issue of leaks. And then the picture you see down here is basically, you see where a portion of the reinforced concrete beam has spalled or fell off, and you're seeing the rebar exposed on that particular beam, and that's been due to moisture present underneath the podium. When you talk about City Hall, when you talk about the building history, the City Commission in '62, Lee Potter Smith and Associates, that was a local architecture firm, and they were very prominent in this area. They did work from Murray to Bowlin Green to Owensboro, and they were located here in Paducah. And I understand from historians that I've been talking to since we've been studying City Hall that it was Mr. Potter that suggested to the city that they needed to go to Edward Darrell Stone out of New York, New York, and bring him on for the conceptual concept and look of the building and to basically come up with the concept of how the building would look. And the photograph you see here is that concept. It was meant to be a modern building. It was meant to look like, I understand that the moat, the dry moat with the light that you see was meant to make it look like it was floating is kind of the image it has. You can see that right there. The canopies were once lit from the floor up, and it was a very, very magnificent building. But understand that Lee Potter Smith actually drew the construction documents and oversaw the construction, so they were your architect of record then. I had my records, we opened for business '64. I heard you say that next year will be 50 years. I had, I was under the impression that it'd been 50 years this year. We're going to talk about a 1978 report by a structural engineer named Ted F. Billington, and it has a very significant part in the history of the building. We're going to talk about a 1979 study by Gresham Keeling Jones. In 1989, there was some HVAC improvements done. Really, you all have avoided doing a major capital improvement to the City Hall ever since it's been constructed. You obviously have improved suites, and that's what I refer to as the different departments at different times, and you have upgraded things as you come across them. Obviously, the building wasn't built for computers and technology like we have now, but you have avoided and not had a major overhaul, rehabilitation of the facility. There was an elevator improvement in '98. There was HVAC control improvement that I worked on in 2005. In 2010, Apex Engineering did a roof structure report. We're going to talk about the findings of that report. And then in 2014, BFW, specifically Ron Bacon, prepared the evaluation of the structure and report. So that's just a little bit of thumbnail history of the building. The reason I brought up Ted F. Billington is very important. Approximately 15 years after the building was constructed, he wrote this about seven or eight-page report to the City Manager. And what it says in it is that we were starting to see five inches of unexpected deflections in our canopy. The overhangs that are around City Hall, we call the canopy, the surrounding structure, had already deflected five inches. They were intended to never do that, and so it was a concern. The city asked Ted Billington to look into it. We have found out that Ted Billington was not the structural engineer for the building. He was working at the time for Lee Potter Smith, but another structural engineer was over the project. Subsequent to that, and within 15 years, Ted had started his own structural engineering company. His study recommendation just basically was summarized by two main points, and that was that he said we needed to monitor the deflection over time and that we needed to, and that if the roof structure continued to deflect, that he recommended immediate steps be taken to strengthen the roof structure. Our review of the city files indicates that that was not done. We cannot find any history that the deflections were monitored and that anyone ever came back to that report to discuss its meaning. We thought it was important because it was right on the money just 15 years after the building was built. Secondly, another report that was right on the money was a 1979 report done by Gresham Keeling Jones. J.T. Carter, construction coordinator, wrote this four-page study to the city administrator in which he evaluated the roof, the pyramid structure that's in the roof, and the concrete podium. All three elements were leaking, and according to this report, they'd been leaking ever since construction. And it seemed like there was some frustration over, let's find this problem, let's get to the root of it, and let's solve it. And the report basically says that many stop-gap measures had been tried, but nothing had worked. And the final recommendations of the report was a major project needed to be done to reflash the many skylights that are in the pyramid shape on the roof, that we needed to re-roof the entire building, and that we needed to replace the concrete podium and install proper waterproofing. It described that how the podium was constructed was with a water repellent that was installed prior to the exposed aggregate topping, and that that, they knew, had failed and would not do the job, and that another one couldn't be put back. And so it described the only way to do that properly was to jackhammer the concrete podium up and start again. So that report wasn't too good, and we don't find anything in the records that shows that the city went anywhere with that. I think we just started trying to seal up the podium, try to keep the leaks down. In 2010, Joel Scarborough hired Apex Engineering, a structural engineer there by the name of Mark Caldwell, who I've worked with for many years, wrote this report. We have read it for you, and we agree with a lot of his findings. It cited similar problems as a 1978 report by Ted Billington. It also noted that seismic improvements are recommended for the structure for the primary reason to reduce the odds of a building failure. And so we thought this report was accurate, and it was something that we did review to do our own. When we talk about seismic, we want to talk about terminology so that we can all talk from the same plane or same plateau, and that is the definition of an essential facility. We run across city administrators and county administrators a lot that are confused by this terminology. It's a terminology we use in the code as it's defined by building code, and it's basically a name given to a building that you expect to provide emergency response during or after a disaster. Generally, essential facility designations are assigned to things like our 911 centers, our ambulance shelters, our fire stations, our police stations, those things that we think of as our first responders. And we were asked about City Hall. Could City Hall be an essential facility? What you need to know is it wasn't designed to be one nearly 50 years ago or over 50 years ago, and it doesn't currently meet that status now. So basically, we're just basically a business group B for civic administration. And so we'll come back to this term essential facility and what it means to the city. The spatial analysis was done by Paul King at Peck, Flaner, Grim, Warren, in that he did meet all of your directors for your many departments and talked about their current facilities. Do they have enough space? Do they have enough storage? And then he also discussed with them what's their future plans for growth. Do they see that they need more space, both short-term and long-term? Out of all that, you basically get down to talking about square footage and how much space you need to house the functions of the civic administration. Basically, this building has just under 61,000 square feet. We have found through our walkthroughs and study of the building that approximately 91% of that space is being used, actively used, or is assigned space. The results of the spatial analysis told us that basically you can get by with a little bit smaller building, that the City Hall is big enough if it could be repurposed somewhat and departments laid out a little differently, but the total summary of the space requested by the directors was 45,000, just about 46,000 square feet. And then 5,000 square feet of joint storage is needed, so right at 50,000 square foot of space is needed for with the way the city has operated today and with the short-term plan for growth. So the good news is City Hall is big enough if you decide to renovate. Here's the summary of the analysis, and it goes down by department, talks about what the computed square footage was for needs. It also talks about things about adjacencies, and that's something that you can't do much about today, but that is, if you were reconfiguring your floor plans, how would you locate human resources? They would primarily be next to public employees, and secondly, they would be near finance. And so I think you can look at some of these and tell that you don't have those adjacencies now. Some of these, they're naturally occurring next to each other, and that works out fine. Also, we wanted to note that this joint storage area that was defined to be 5,000 square feet possibly does not have to be located here. It could be located off-site if you didn't want it to be in City Hall. And the public works and maintenance occupies 2,500 square foot of our basement, and that could also be located off-site. I believe they are not dedicated to City Hall. They're actually out in the city doing maintenance. And so there in summary, you see how we arrived at 50,000 square feet total. When we talk about your floor plan, this is your basement area, and basically, the basement used to be a jail, and it used to be a police station. It's no longer been used as that, nor was it renovated. So if you go down there, you'll still find the jail cells. You will still find the offices for the police station. What we have used the space for, and this would be on the west side of the parking areas, is we're basically using it for storage. All of our many different departments have different areas that they have claimed down there, and that's where they're doing their storage. But it is about as motley as you see here. The spaces are here and there. You'll find that finance has a few rooms over here and then a few rooms over there. And so they have moved in and used those for storage areas. We do not have any offices down in the basement. You have a newer training room that's been upgraded, and that's used, and I believe the credit union is down there. When you look to the east side of the parking, this area here in the aqua or cyan color is the public works or maintenance area, and then back up to this area here, this is all dedicated to the mechanical-electrical systems in the building. If you were building a this-size building new today, it would not be that large. We have learned to make systems be a lot smaller. The first floor, if you take a focused look at that, finance basically has the north side of the building with human resources over in the northeast corner. Fire prevention has grown as you've brought in building code enforcement with the fire department, and they basically have the entire south side of the facility. The area in blue is important to note, and this is basically your circulation area. This is unassigned area, and we have a very large entry foyer that's really not used like it was intended. There has been an addition of a receptionist desk, but I don't think that's used in that manner. And then the large atrium fountain area, those are all areas that you cannot utilize, place someone there, or you know, basically conduct business there. They were made to be monumental spaces. They were made to be open with the context of the building. And you can see how large of an area that is of the first floor. When you study the second-floor engineering, occupies the northwest corner of the building. Planning is stretched out. They have recently had a suite improvements, new carpet, new furnishings, and things like that, but they stretch down the Fourth Street side of the building. And if you've ever been back in here, I discovered you cannot get to offices over here unless you walk through other offices. So I had to interrupt a few people to get to this center office and be able to see it and analyze it. We're in the commission chambers now, which is on the south side of the building, and then, of course, the mayor and the city manager are on the west side. All the blue area here is a circulation area, too. It's dedicated to stairways, dedicated to restrooms, and dedicated to the balcony that overlooks the atrium. The structural analysis that was performed by BFW is several pages long. You're welcome to read it anytime you want a really dry read, but we're going to summarize it for you. Ron Bacon, our structural engineer, is here tonight. The analysis he did covered basically the physical deterioration of the building, safety concerns that was brought up by you all to us, seismic improvements, and then means and methods. And what we mean by that is what is the means and methods by which we could renovate City Hall? How can that be done logistically? The summary findings is basically two parts, and the first one, we will address the canopy on the left side. The canopy is quite large. The canopy roof structure itself is different than the roof structure over us in the part that we're in that houses your operations. It was basically a reinforced concrete structure, and it is very large. It weighs 1,500 tons. That's a big number for us engineers and architects. Each column, there's 20 columns that surround the building, and each one of those columns supports approximately 900 square foot of the canopy, and so each column is carrying 150,000 pounds of weight. So to carry off, to carry out the look that Mr. Darrell Stone had for the building meant we had a lot of concrete overhead. It's very formidable. You generally do not see that much weight in a roof structure in a building. We did some of the same measurements that was done by Ted F. Billington, and we've discovered that the canopy has continued to deflect since 1978, and now we got some readings as high as eight and a half inches of deflection. Ron reviewed the reinforcing steel design and found what he believes is a reinforcing steel design flaw that is causing those, is causing this canopy to sag and to deflect. The result is the reinforcing steel in the canopy is overstressed several times what it should be, several times what the industry would accept, find as be acceptable limits. And our recommendation is that the canopy should be removed if you continue to keep the building and continue to occupy it. And we will note that you could replace the canopy if you wanted to mimic it. You could replace it with steel and then an EFS finish system, and you could replicate the look of the beams and the matrix of the concrete beams. The other part of the report deals with the seismic strength of the building. The main building roof, the part that houses the part that we're in that's air-conditioned and heated, has 800 tons of weight in it. You can see right away how it's a lesser, a lighter construction than the canopy. The second floor, for example, that we're standing on right now, has 900 tons of structure. So the roof and the second floor together just do exceed what the canopy weight is around the perimeter. Ron's findings was that the building does not meet modern seismic standards. Those standards did not exist when design was done. That significant new bracing would be needed if the facility was meant to withstand an earthquake, that the bracing would require invasive building enhancements if you do that. We would have to do selective demolition of the building to go back and make it stronger, to make it something that it wasn't originally intended to do, and so much so that we would nearly need, we would need to remove nearly 50% of the exterior walls and rebuild those walls stronger so that they would have seismic rigidity or the seismic strength needed or seismic event. I want to be sure that we're clear on the terms and what deflection is we're talking about. This is a side view of City Hall. The roof canopy is the part that we're talking about that overhangs the podium, and that's this piece here, and that's this piece over here. The 20 columns that we've talked about are the freestanding columns surrounding the building. The downward deflection or the sag that we're talking about is mimicked by this red line The downward deflection, or the sag that we're talking about, is mimicked by this red line that we've added. And basically, as you get further to the outer edge, and as you get to the four corners, you will find that those have deflected the most, and that makes sense, and it is apparent to us by reviewing the drawings why it does that. The main building is from here to here, that is the part that, basically, the four exterior walls encompass or contain. This is the pyramid shape I was speaking of earlier with the mini skylights in it. In this view right here, you can see how your basement is much larger than your first floor. This is the outer wall of the basement, and the basement goes all the way over to here. And so, the outer walls of the basement are just beyond the edge of the roof canopy. And so, any water that lands on the concrete podium that is over our basement is leaking through and can leak through and create water damage like we've been having over the past five decades. So, when you stand on the Fifth Street side and look at City Hall, this is a perspective shot, so you can see it, you can physically see the downward deflection as you approach the corner. It's easier to see in person than it is in this view. When you do an enlarged view or a focused view of that, you'll start to see some damages occurring due to the deflection. This right here has probably occurred one of two reasons, either the compression and tension that's going on in that concrete is being bent or is being deflected down, and more likely, it's caused by water that's entering the structure, and we've got corrosion of our reinforcing steel, and corrosion of steel is, will cause that diameter to expand, and that something's got to give. And generally, what happens is your outer edges of your concrete come loose or pop loose. So, we were able to notice several deformations and damages that are occurring. There's some images that don't show up here, but we have vertical cracking, and that's being caused by the top part being intensile, it's being pulled, and that's occurring at the top, not necessarily the bottom. This is the pyramid of the mini skylights that, according to the seventy-nine report, most of the water was entering our roof structure from this element. All the many flashings that go around these skylights was not done properly, and water was actually entering there, and once it gets on top of the roof, but underneath the roofing, it's then can go around the building and get to the many areas. So, this has been a source of many leaks over the years for the city. I understand there's been many projects to improve the roofing, but I believe, knock on some wood, right now, we're fairly dry in that area. When we looked at your canopies, your roofs over your canopy areas, we noted one thing that indicates what we're telling you, and that is the ponding of water along the outside edge. If you see all this ponding of water, it's occurring because of the deflection of the canopy. Our roof drains are here, these that you see here, and that's where the water has got to get to to drain down. Those correspond to the columns. The water was meant to enter the columns and then go out below grade, so you don't see any downspouts, and it was meant to conceal. That was partly the reason for not having enough reinforcing steel, by the way, because where that roof leader or that pipe met where the reinforcing bar should have been, the reinforcing bars were left out, so that the pipe could be there. But when you have ponding water like this, you have accelerated roof deterioration, and also, more roof leaks and more water in that canopy just causes it to degrade even more. We know that when you analyze underneath the canopy. The picture on the left is taken, just a typical spot, but close to the corners. We see things like rust here along the cracking. Well, rust tells us as engineers that that is coming from the corrosion of the reinforcing steel inside this concrete. So, we know that there's corrosion going on, and it's carrying the rust and leaving the stains here along the cracks. We witnessed several instances of spalling, basically where concrete has popped loose from the structure and fell, and that has occurred for two reasons, water in the canopy structure, corroding the steel, also freezing can do that, just like our roadways. Our roadways freeze and expand in the winter, and we get potholes, and you almost have the reverse situation with the underside of this canopy. You all have done many things to improve this, there's been a lot of scraping and gouging and trying to remove the loose concrete and then painting, to paint those areas that are exposed and show that. The picture to the right is what it would look like if it had not been painted. This was a recent spa that we found, that is the size of a large dinner plate, it doesn't look like that in this image, but you can see the reinforcing bar right there, and you can see it's obviously corroded due to the rust, and so, probably, this section gave way just because of the forces of the physics of the corrosion growing around that reinforcing bar, getting larger, and so, something gives, and that's the concrete, and it falls. And this picture here is the broken remnants from above. Basically, there's about ten or twelve pieces that once was a large piece from there, and those were fairly sizable, and those could hurt you if they were to fall on you. And so, this is going on, basically, at our four corners of our canopy, where the failure has been most prominent in the sag. It's going on less towards the centers of the building, basically at the entryways and at the parking garage entryways. So, let's go back and talk about how could you strengthen the building if you wanted the facility to be an essential facility? If you're saying that you want City Hall to withstand an earthquake and still do City Hall functions after the earthquake, we would have to remove fifty percent of the perimeter walls from floor to roof and rebuild those much stronger, and that is what you see colored in green. We would have to remove this much of the outside wall, come over here and remove this much, and we do that on all four sides. We are purposely focusing on the corners of the building because that's where you want to reinforce, to add the lateral strength of the lateral bracing to resist the motion of an earthquake. So, very invasive. As you can see, we cannot replicate your windows. I think this City Hall is defined by tall windows from floor to ceiling, and we can't do that. We have to have very large sections of wall for strength, and so, about alls we can replicate would be small openings where the windows once were. If we were to do this and strengthen the structure, we would have to strengthen the foundation that it sits on, and we would have to go in the basement area and do very large foundations, that's what you see represented here in the cyan or the aqua color. We have to do very large foundations to support or actually transmit those loads, a lot of stresses from an earthquake through the walls, down through the foundation and into the ground. And so, what it would mean is if you told, if you made it a requirement that we want to renovate City Hall and we want it enhanced to be an essential facility, this is the magnitude of what we're talking about, of having to make it be able to do that. We would lose some of our floor area in the basement, we would not be able to use those spaces anymore for the purposes that they are now, and we would lose some of the look of the building from the outside. We can go ahead and put glass in that's from floor to ceiling, but it, part of it would have to be opaque, just to fool someone that's standing on the outside, not realizing, hey, that's not full glass. You would see it at night, when the lights are on, you'd see, oh, there's just a small window instead of a full heath window like the rest of it. So, it would dramatically change the building to strengthen the building and make it be an essential facility. Let's talk about the architectural assessment, basically, just talking about exterior and interior. We found ponding on the roof and leaks in the roof structure, it is ready for some roof improvements. It does need positive drainage so that the water all drains to the roof drains, and so, that means it's, roof basically needs to be tore off and built up with slope and put back. Windows are original to the building, they're inefficient, they're single-pane windows. We've learned a lot about building technology since this was built, we're now up to triple pane windows. The doors are mismatched, and we found that all your entryways from your exterior into the building, this accounts both in the parking garage and on the Fourth Street side and Fifth Street side, are unsupervised, and that's not the case with a lot of City Halls. Facade, the wall sealants have failed, paint coatings are in need of additional painting, removing, scraping the loose paint, repainting the facility. The podium is cracked just about everywhere and has water leaks just about everywhere, and should be considered for that overhaul that was discussed in nineteen seventy-nine. Hand railings were noted to be corroded and deteriorated in need of paint. Interior, we noticed that a lot of your departments have lack of public reception. There is nowhere to enter and be greeted by someone and to sit and wait if need be. Some departments have made spaces like this, perhaps you're going to sit in an aisle way or, in the case of some areas, there was a little area to sit, but a lot of the departments are missing a way to receive the public, greet them, and direct them. Dated motifs, the motifs are original. It's never been updated and has never been refurbished in no way. Non-conforming stairs has always been a longstanding concern here, and those would need to be addressed in a major renovation and brought up to standards. If you decide not to renovate, you would not have to bring up those types of things. We found several items of disrepair in the finishes, we found lots of cracked floor finishes. The building has very nice trazo, you don't see too many buildings built with that today because of the cost, but there are a lot of telegraphed cracking in the floors. And antiquated and obsolete door hardware, we're not totally ADA in the facility, we are in a lot of areas. Mechanical assessment, we only have automatic sprinklers in the basement. Today, if you were building a new two-story building that's public, that has assembly like this on this floor, you would be required to sprinkle all areas. The only reason is probably in the basement, it's probably because of the original jailing or incarceration that was down there, and you've got to protect those inmates from fire. So, our automatic sprinkler system's only in the basement, the plumbing is original to the building. We found several instances of plumbing leaks, it's been repaired, lots of repair has been done to the plumbing. Most areas are not ADA compliant, but we have refurbished a couple of restrooms to be ADA compliant, so you can tell that somewhere in the past, someone addressed ADA needs. But basically, we found that plumbing is in need or it's time for replacement. HVAC was probably the least attractive parts of your mechanical systems. The HVAC system in this building is a dual duct system, there's very few buildings that have this anymore. It once was very common in the fifties and sixties and seventies to build buildings like this because they were thought to be the best for comfort. But what's best for comfort is very costly to maintain and to operate, because it means we are heating both hot air and cold air year-round, and we're blowing those airs around the building to mix at every different department and try to satisfy the space for whatever it needs, heating or cooling. This is a picture of your chiller, it's got just a few more years of life on it before it's going to need updating. Your boiler system's in need of replacement now. This is your boilers down in the basement. Over half of the boilers are not operating at the moment, they've got just several different items that are wrong with them, and we're finding that you can't get parts to repair those. The terminal units are in need of replacement, this is a typical terminal unit, if you was to remove the ceilings throughout the building, you would find several of these, and this is the unit that mixes the two air streams I talked about. This is the hot air coming in, this is the cold air coming in, and that's blended then, and then it goes to all the different spaces in the department through overhead grillage. The terminal units are original to the building and need to be replaced. So, the hydraulic piping and ductwork in the building is original. Basically, your HVAC system has exceeded its lifespan. Normally, by now, the HVAC system would have been overhauled and replaced. Some examples I can give you is like at West Kentucky Community Technical College, the library, the MLRC building, it had a dual duct HVAC system in it. Ten years ago, I renovated, I just oversaw the renovation of it, and we changed that out into a system that's much more efficient. So, generally, your HVAC systems are replaced once in the lifespan of a structure, of a building. Electrical assessment, your light levels were low in several areas throughout the building, a lot of your lighting is still inefficient. We have incandescent lighting here in this area, a lot of the lighting was T-12, that's now three versions behind what we're doing new buildings with. Emergency egress lighting needs some attention in several spots or needs to be improved. Power distribution is mostly original to the building and is overloaded, we have a lot of panels that are filled and just now have additional breakers. The fire alarm system is in need of replacement. If you do nothing and do not renovate, you don't have to do anything to it because it's grandfathered in. But if you were to decide to start renovating, you would have to replace that and bring it up to current codes. This is an example of the lighting that are in our stairways, it's the original fixtures from sixty-three, when the building was constructed. Very inefficient, also do not have proper light distribution. One thing we saw missing here that you see in a lot of public governmental buildings is access controls and closed-circuit TV. Those are security measures that a lot of cities are putting in place to control the public and to keep separation between those areas that are meant to be for staff only and those areas that are meant for public. And basically, the electrical system as a whole is in need or it's time for upgrades. So, whenever we do evaluations like this, we're always asked about costs, and cost seems to define things, and how big of a problem do we have? And so, we're going to give you a conceptual opinion of cost, we sat down and did several pages of estimating, but we summarized it here in one page to try to make it simple to understand. The first line we've got to address is, we do still have some hazardous materials in the building, and so, if we were to renovate and those areas that we encounter that, we would need to abate that, and that's something we need to be aware of, so we can budget costs for that, and also, plan on the skilled removal of that, and that sometimes causes you to have to leave a space and put up the personnel protection that's needed and do that. So, that is one item we don't want to lose fact of if we do renovation. Demolition, we've included in this conceptual opinion of cost upgrading the facility to be an essential facility, so we have included the canopy demolition, we've also included the podium demolition to stop and repair those water leaks, also to have a finished concrete deck that's not all broken up and has got multiple cracks or areas where we're actually missing concrete. Structural repair and enhancement have been included, architectural renovations have been included. Basically, under architectural renovations, we would update just about everything. We can go into the areas, remove the partition walls that are there, repartition the space to be more efficient as defined by the spatial analysis. There would be new finishes, new ceilings, new flooring, a new decoration motif would probably be introduced, and we'd get away from the old one. Mechanical/electrical renovation, that would be just about a complete mechanical/electrical upgrade. Sprinkler system throughout, plumbing overhauled, HVAC overhauled, electrical upgraded. We've included an estimate contingency, because we've not done any design, we've not done any drawings, estimates basically have more degree of error. So, we've included a twenty percent estimate contingency for those things that we do not know now, and if you all decide to move forward, we would begin to learn as we study the building more and start to prepare drawings, and that estimate contingency could start to lower as we know more about the project. But because it's very early conceptual phase, we believe it's prudent to conclude a twenty percent estimate contingency at this time. This summary's going to give us our total direct cost, that's basically the cost to construct, the cost to renovate, that includes the material and the labor to do the actual work. Whenever we do projects, there are other costs that you have to carry along, and that's basically your soft cost or indirect cost, and we have estimated that, or actually, we have allowed twenty percent for that. That is what the state does for most state projects, that's That's what a lot of the industry will put on a project for your indirect costs. Those cover such things as your permits, your fees, your construction contingencies for things that you did not expect to encounter. And one major item that we can't estimate and we can't help you with, but we wanted to identify, if we renovated or if we removed the canopy, I did not, excuse me for not saying so, to remove the canopy would need to be done with the building evacuated. So you would have to relocate City Hall. That probably means you would have to rent space. You would have to prepare that space to house City Hall or to house your different departments if you decided to break up and be in different places in the city. And there will be expenses with that and we have not estimated those. We can't anticipate what those would be at this point. The reason you'd want to move out though, if you remove the canopy, is the sawing, the jackhammering, the heavy cranes, the trucks, all those things it would take to get 1,400 tons of concrete down in trucks and hauled away are dangerous and noisy and we do not recommend that you stay in City Hall during that. So I've now added the cost for these items. The allowance for hazardous material abatement, we've allowed $100,000 for today's presentation. Demolition is quite costly. The canopy demolition is the heaviest cost and that's just over $2 million reserved for that. Structural repair and enhancement of the facility is a very large task. It totaled out to be just over $3 million. Architectural renovations was basically $2.5 million. Mechanical/electrical renovations was just over $3 million. When you add the estimate contingency of 20% of the above items, that's an additional $2 million. So we're talking about a total direct cost of a major renovation of the facility being $13 million. When you add the indirect costs of another 20%, we would advise you to plan on carrying approximately $2.5 million in indirect costs for the project. We cannot estimate the temporary offices and expenses for you. So we know we're talking about just in project cost alone, something that is in the order of magnitude of over $15 million. It could be as low as $14 million if our estimate contingency is too high and it could be as high as $16.5 million if our estimate contingency is a little low. We have broken out the cost for doing a seismic upgrade for you so that you can know that and that was basically down here in the bottom left-hand corner and it's just right at $2 million to do the seismic upgrade. If you decide you do not want to do the seismic upgrade at City Hall, you simply come over here and subtract that number from this bottom line. Any questions about the opinion of costs? Is it clear? Okay, good. When you talk about costs, you usually talk about schedule and we need you to understand that to renovate City Hall would be a long task. So we've prepared this conceptual schedule to help you understand. Basically, from the day that you say start planning or start your design, we believe it'll take 30 to 40 weeks, that's all this green bar that you see here. It'd take 30 to 40 weeks just to prepare the documents, to have those reviewed by building code enforcement, fire prevention, and just get ourselves ready to construct. Then, when you get to the construction phase or basically everything you see in blue here, one of the first tasks we'd have is we have to move out and so we would have to have our temporary offices ready and be able to move into those. We would bid out the work for the procurement policies that you have in place. We would start with hazardous abatement first and that means really no other appreciable work could be going on probably during that period. We have reserved four to six weeks for that. Then we would really start demolition by all trades and all work. I'm sorry. We start demolition of the canopy. The canopy would have to be a period of time where you do not have workers in the building as well and so that would take another four to six weeks. So you can see here, we finally reached the milestone of being able to begin renovation where we get into the building, we actually work for 40 to 50 weeks. Commission the building, that's where we turn the building back over to the city. You all have to, we recommend spend three to four weeks settling and getting it ready before you actually move your staff in so that when move-in happens, it occurs with little disruption and you can continue to function. So anyway, we've said all that and have studied all that to tell you this, that we are talking about something that planning and design can take eight to nine months. Construction could take anywhere from 13 to 16 months depending on how much of a renovation you decide you may want to undertake. And so you're talking about a total project from the time that you start to the time that you could be moved back in of taking one and a half years to just over two years. So we want you to realize that it costs a lot and it also takes a lot of time. So summary, I'm at the end. I will say this, it should not be understated how well the city has done to make the building last 50 years. The life cycle is, Mr. Peterson said at the very beginning of the meeting, is generally 50 years. You have made it 50 years and you have avoided having a major renovation till now. So we think you've had a very successful lifespan of the building. You all have been good stewards of the building to get it this far. We're going to leave you with three recommendations. One, we've got to point out, it became obvious to us that we think you need to immediately limit access under the canopy. We think that area, due to the falling spalling or spall, could be hazardous and so we think we should make sure that no one can be under that overhang or that canopy area, number two. You need to initiate your plans for the removal of the canopy. Since '78, we've known it's been deflecting and it's just continuing to deflect more and every year it continues to degrade. Moisture and time just deteriorate things and the canopy's going to have to be dealt with in the very short foreseeable future. And then you do need to plan for the long-term future of the building. And what do we mean by that? Well, do you want to repurpose a building to go another 30 to 40, 50 years? 50 years may be not realistic. 30 or 40 years is quite possible. And so what you would need to decide is if you decide that you want to extend the life of the City Hall, you would need to arrive at what the scope of the renovation would be. Therefore, you can then ascertain what the real cost would be and what the real schedule could be. Basically, input is needed back for how much of a renovation are you looking at or wanting. And with that, that was all I had and if there's any questions about what I reviewed, I'll be happy to go back and discuss it a little more. I wouldn't want anybody to be confused by anything we presented today.
Just clarifying, I think you did a couple of times using terms like deflection.
Deflection.
So basically, in true layman's terms, what that means is the canopy is slowly falling down.
Correct. Yep.
Okay. That's important to make sure everybody understands exactly what that means.
That's right.
Okay.
Well, I have a question on your recommendation to initiate removal of the canopy. Would your recommendation be to only do that if we're going to renovate the entire building?
Okay. You have some choices. You could remove the canopy and leave the building without such a prominent overhang and we would have to do something to address the perimeter and to be sure we're sealed up from weather. You could say replicate the canopy and put back a steel structure that's much lighter and give it the same look. Because it's such a task to move out of City Hall and to give a contractor many, many weeks to skillfully cut it up in small pieces and lower it down to the ground and haul away and put back, we believe that you would want to couple that with a renovation and go ahead and look at doing the capital investment needed to get another life cycle out of the building. And so that's why we have coupled removing the canopy with renovation. But you certainly could decide to just remove the canopy and stop there and do nothing else and see how much further you can make it without doing a major renovation.
Have you built any 50,000, your estimate that what we needed on square footage was about 50,000 square feet?
That's right. The spatial study suggests that the building is a little oversized. I think that's true because you look at the basement area is not used efficiently. So that was right here. Right, 50,000 square feet. Yes, what that number means is if you were to build a City Hall today, because it has things like circulation and other factors added into it, that would be what you would expect to build a new City Hall at today. So yes, if you wanted to build a new City Hall, your target would probably be 50,000 square feet.
And I guess I'd be putting you on the spot if I ask you an estimate on something like that?
Well, it depends on many things. First of all, too many times in our industry, we throw out square foot numbers and that's dangerous. It's good and bad. I think it will depend on if you decide to be a central facility or not. That affects it. It would depend on site acquisition and what has to be done to that site to make it ready for a building. So let's remove some of those things. Let's just say that your entire building does not need to be a central facility, but only a part of it will be. Perhaps it's the area which you would run your command center out of. And then let's say that it was built on this site, so there is no site to have to buy or prepare. This is a level site. So a government building like this where you've got departments and chambers and your mechanical/electrical things that go with that, probably around $190, $200 a square foot. So what that does, it puts you around the $10 million milestone at 50,000 square feet. You've got the demolition of this building that would have to be considered and it would be fairly sizable. I mean, this building, you wouldn't just push down with a track excavator. You would have to cut this building down and then hammer it into smaller pieces and haul it off. So the demolition costs on a facility like this would probably be a half million to three-quarter million dollars just to take this building down and put it back to grade, backfill the basement and such. But you can see how when the costs that we talked about... I went back to the front too soon. I should have stayed near the end. 10 million is an order of magnitude number, just as this is an order of magnitude number for renovating. But what you would compare that to in this spreadsheet I gave you right here is the direct cost. So it would be 13 million versus 10 million because I'm not adding indirect costs to what I'm telling you. I'm not addressing your temporary offices or situations like that. I'm just addressing a building.
Well, either way, you would have the temporary office expense. If you renovated this building, you're going to have to move everybody out and relocate.
That's correct.
If you didn't renovate this building and you started all over, you're probably, you're going to have to move people out if you stayed on this site.
Right.
So that's going to probably stay the same, but the difference would be what it would cost to totally renovate this building or what it would look like to build a new one and demolish this one.
That's right. Yeah. It could be done for less.
Okay. Let's go back to recommendation number one about immediately limiting access under the canopy.
Right.
What are your thoughts in regard to that?
If you remember me saying, under the overhangs, basically, your deterioration and where you're getting spall, spalling is in the corners here. There's very little of it to none in the center. So we think, I would think that you would probably want to limit access to possibly only entry from the Fifth Street side, maybe close Fourth Street side. Do not prohibit egress in case you have to leave the building in an emergency. But certainly, keep people from coming up on the podium from the Fourth Street side or walking around the building. So something that perhaps you build a barricade so that people can come in from Fifth Street side and go straight in the building. Probably just should not be on the podium anywhere around the building. So I will say that again, that's right here. Something that keeps the public in between those two barricades and allows them into the building. And Fourth Street side, you could do that if you wanted to go ahead and do more of the same and still keep that stairway up into the building. I will say that it's also safe to enter through the parking garage because the canopy is over the podium. So that's another thing you could do, but that's a lot of people going and coming from your basement. I still think you would want to keep one of your grade entry ways open.
Okay. Can this building be imploded?
Imploded.
Instead of taking it apart, you know, in pieces?
With explosions, with explosive materials. I don't have experience in that. I would need to consult someone.
Well, I mean, I know there are different ways to demo a building.
You're right. And there's companies that specialize in something like this and I think what we would do is consult them to see what is the best method. You could still do quite a bit with machine and track holes that have hammers on those. And so I don't think explosives are needed, but if that is the best solution or the least costly solution, we'll certainly bring it to you all's attention.
And then what about concerns about the large trees that surround City Hall? Any damage to those with any major work like that? And then where's your construction field?
Well, the construction field would be the yard all the way around. They would be in all parts of that area.
Then we'd have all that to expense on top of that.
Yeah. What you would do for your trees is you would protect those with fenced areas. We probably would recommend that you bring an arborist in and go ahead and prune back the trees so the limbs are mostly out of the way of the lifting equipment. But there would be cranes set up around the building and it would work its way around the building and just dismantle it, almost in the reverse fashion of which it was probably built. But then we certainly would have to repair the yard when that's done and put it back.
So your study is all about renovating it? We would have to do another study about demolition and a new building?
Right. Our task was look at all these issues we have with City Hall and tell us how can it be improved and renovated. Now, we've not studied building another City Hall and what things and features would it have in it, but that could certainly be looked at or added on to that. I can point to another city that's completing a City Hall right now and that's the city of Hopkinsville. And it's probably 8% complete right now and it's entirely an essential facility. We don't see City Halls do that a lot, but they decided to do that there.
Is that a brand-new City Hall?
It is. Yep. I went by it to look at the other day to see that.
Do you know how many square feet it is?
Yes, I do.
I'm sorry. I know I'm putting you on the spot on different questions, but...
Well, I brought it up, didn't I? Yeah, it has, we've been told it has 33,000 square feet in it. They're building it right in town. It's just not even a whole block to the north of US 68 business that goes right through the middle of Hopkinsville.
Did they demo one or just...
No, they're building it in a total different spot. They're planning on using their old City Hall for, if we understand, new police headquarters. And what they're going to do there, the construction manager has shared with us, is the part of the police headquarters that needs to be an essential facility, they're going to build in addition to that City Hall, build that there. They're going to use the remainder of City Hall probably for less important offices and things like that.
So their situation was different from ours. It was a new City Hall.
Right.
And their old City Hall could be used for something else where ours... Where ours...
They moved closer to Court Square is what they did. They moved it... Their old city hall is a block or two off of Highway 68. And so they're moving it closer to the center of town is what they're doing.
But you're saying, we'll go back to what, that a new city hall is not inclusive of everything with city hall like what we have here?
For them?
Yes.
I couldn't tell you exactly what all they're going to do in that. We did ask the construction manager that's overseeing the construction of it if it happened to be an essential facility or not, thinking it wouldn't be and surprised to find out it was.
But we were just talking about the space difference between what they're having there and what we estimate that we would need.
Right. I'm saying, I'm thinking that because they're a central facility, they may have some 911 dispatching in it. They may have their command center in it for disasters. And those are some things that currently are not in our city hall. We have our own, a separate building for 911 dispatch. So I really shouldn't speak too much about them because I don't know about that project too much. You certainly can go drive by and see it. It's looking very, it's a brick and limestone building, and it looks a lot like some of the new courthouses that we've seen go up in the last few years. We have had the occasion to work on several of those.
The, just as an example, the New Murray State Building?
Right.
Do you know the square footage of it?
Thank you.
It's 43,000, and it was about eight and a half to nine million dollars?
That's a very good point. The direct cost was eight million, is that right? Eight point six.
And it's 46,000 square feet, 43,000 square feet?
Okay. You know, it opens up a lot of questions, a lot to think about. But if we demoed this one and rebuilt on this site,
Right.
How many years are we talking?
Well, that brings up a question for me, and that is, would we expect to site it right where this building is? Because if you do, then you would have two tasks in series. We'd have to totally take the building down, do proper backfill and compacted lifts, then start building. If you could find a way to situate it beside the building and allow us to build it while we stay here, then you could move over one time and then we demolish the building.
I don't think that there's enough room.
I don't want to take all the trees down.
Have you ever seen the model for this building? Do you remember the model it used to sit in, down there in the foyer? If you've ever seen that model, its vision was that Dolly McNutt and this block was all one and that there would not be a Fifth Street. And so if you want to think outside the box, close Fifth Street and build city hall almost on Fifth Street, and then this would come down and be a big front yard for city hall. It could be more park.
A nice green park.
But I say that to say this, is you could save costs if there's a way to figure that out. Another idea is cross, go across Clark and build on what is your parking lot now and then make this your parking lot when you're done.
So that would, that would save in temporary moving?
It would, right.
That's the big savings. If we went across here and said, okay, built over there, then after that's done, demo this, it just saves the temporary moving and relocation?
I'll use the example of our project at Paducah Middle School. On that project, we made sure to site the building adjacent to the next one so that they could continue to have school in it while we built their new building. And then we had relatively short move period in which we moved them over. And then we tore down the old school. It's always a cost savings whenever you can go, move from one facility right into the next one, and you can avoid those expenses.
Mayor? I think we've got a lot of things to think about, and maybe we need another workshop for some concepts.
Yeah, there's different scenarios, different approaches. Obviously, there are a lot of them.
I mean, I would like an expense on what it would be to build a new one.
That's exactly what I was going to say.
I think it's hard for us to make a decision until we would know that.
I think that's wise.
But in the meantime, the building is deflected.
It needs to be secured.
We'll be taking steps this week to implement necessary measures to close off the area as recommended unless the commissioners act otherwise.
And the reason I say that, because if we're talking, you're right. It's a lot of things to consume and think about. The clock's ticking. So if we're going to talk about possibly rebuilding from the ground up, then that process should happen in this...
Explicitly.
Yes, it shouldn't wait too long to do that, to get those numbers so we can make...
The clock has been ticking for 35 years.
Right.
Yeah. It's almost midnight.
Yeah. There has been quite a bit of discussion at the staff level, and Rick will, has put together some thoughts on the barrier situation and how we disallow access under the overhangs. So that's going to proceed in a pretty straightforward, a pretty quick manner. We've already begun a process of identifying potential temporary locations. Beyond that, I think what we need to do is give you a little time to think about what some of your information needs are for the next time we get together. So please think about that, funnel those into me, and we'll put those in the hands of these gentlemen, and we can come back with better baseline information relative to the scenarios, I think, that have been identified as possible directions moving forward.
Thank you.
All right, thank you all very much.
Thank you so much.
We do have one more workshop item tonight, and it's our downtown summer entertainment. We have Molly here tonight with Mark.
Mayor, Commissioner, thanks for having us here. We have, I'm here just to set the ball on the tee for Molly. She has been doing a lot of, a lot of work, meeting and greeting since her time, her short amount of time here in Paducah. She's been meeting with store owners. She and Melinda Winchester, out of Planning, have been working together on a lot of things, coming up with a lot of really good ideas and things that we're going to, and we've heard everybody's, we've tried to hear everybody's questions and ideas. And I know they've done some real good work. And we're just presenting you all with what we, what they have decided and what we recommend as our process for this summer. And first, she's going to go over the farmer's market, which is nothing but good news.
Just highlights.
And then some information on summer music series as well as downtown entertainment.
Thank you, Mark. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager. Yeah, I'm down here a little, so. It's a pleasure to be here. Like Mark said, I've got to meet a lot of people in the community over the last couple of months. I feel like I've been here a lot longer, which is just an example of how welcoming I think Paducah really is. I'm sure there are many more that I need to meet and talk to. And I try to take some time out of each week and go to some new places and meet some new faces. But just quickly, some highlights on the farmer's market. It's been a pleasure to, I guess, meet some of the old vendors from years past as well as some new faces that are really excited for the opportunity to come to Paducah and set up here as a vendor. The extension office this year, it used to be to be a local vendor. It was within a 100-mile radius. And this year, they've bumped that out to 300 miles. So that's really a bonus for Paducah because we're so regional here. So we're hoping to attract a lot more foot traffic. And the other thing that's exciting about this year is we not only have produce at the market, but we've also opened it to artisan goods, baked goods. There have been some food demonstrators in the past, but we're really trying to get the whole entire community involved, incorporating some local Paducah businesses. We've got Kirchhoff's back. I've talked to etcetera about coming down. We'd love to work with the local library. Just get a lot of, you know, a good mix and some diversity out there because variety, I think, always attracts more people in. And it just benefits the entire community. So with that being said, summer 2014, just kicked us off the farmer's market. These are just some recent pictures of some of the goods. We've got some plants here and some homemade yard flowers. And then also some jams and greens from some of the vendors out there already. We had our soft opening April 21st. And I tell everybody, you know, it's been a tough winter. So I know just typically during quilt week, they've said they always have strawberries, but they've been about two to three weeks behind. So those are really starting to come in now. And the good news I'd like to report is that we actually have a full house and we're getting more and more vendors. So there are 20 spots out there in the pavilion. They are currently all full. And we are looking at expansion. We get calls on a daily basis of people that are interested or people that just stop by the parks office to look at an application and just, they're just excited to, you know, talk about maybe the opportunity of trying their hand at being a vendor at the farmer's market. So I think that's really a positive for the community. With kind of introducing the farmer's market here, we're calling it the Farmer's Market Network of Paducah. This is a product of the city providing insurance for vendors' product liability as well as trip and fall, which has been a huge bonus. And I think it really kind of gets things moving in a forward motion for this market and actually growing the market. It gives people an opportunity that, you know, maybe necessarily wouldn't have come out before to say, hey, you know, I can do that, I can try that, you know, and go ahead and give it a chance. This is just a brief little paragraph about the mission of the farmer's market. It's basically to promote community values, partnerships between the area's citizens, businesses, cultural and recreational opportunities, and healthy family farms that make this region an attractive place to live, work, and play in. I truly think that the Paducah Farmer's Market can provide a gathering place to help nurture the sense of community that's here in Paducah and provide that relationship between growers, producers, artisans, and our customers. Celebration Saturdays, you may have heard about them a little bit. We're looking at, we haven't limited the timeframe this year for the farmer's market. It's still Monday through Saturday, 7:30 to 3:30. But it's very interesting because this year, we're just watching closely the patterns and the movement and when people actually show up and what is most beneficial to the vendors. And they're encouraged to go out there as much as they can, but have also been told that we're really trying to promote Saturday markets because we've found that those really seem to be a time when you get the majority of the people down there. And the current pattern is actually the majority of the vendors can make it on Saturdays. So in doing that, we're going to have some promotions throughout the season for Saturdays where we might feature different vendors, be working with Pam and other forms of advertising to do little bios on the different vendors that you might find and create some marketable pamphlets to distribute to the community. We're looking at doing some, a new logo for the farmer's market and things that we can distribute to the downtown businesses to really promote the farmer's market. We're looking at doing market fresh fitness classes on the green behind the little pavilion area there to kind of really elevate that spirit of a Saturday morning farmer's market. A lot of times, people are walking their dogs or they're biking on the greenway. And I think it just kind of promotes that, I don't know, kind of the spirit that you want, the healthy, living atmosphere. And pairing with the park department, it gives us a chance to, you know, kind of highlight some of the community-based programs that we already have for free or at a reasonable cost to, you know, the community. We're looking at also doing some types of acoustic music down at the farmer's market just to liven up the atmosphere. Like I said before, feature local businesses, create a family and child-friendly environment. We've got people on board to do face painting. We have some really great balloon animal artists here in Paducah. And we've got lots of people willing to come out and do different food demonstrations with our local produce and food that we have at the market as well. So what does that mean for the future? Our grand opening is going to be May 31st. We are going to be promoting that here more this next week. We are hoping to, like I said, to have our full house out there. I know that some, May seems to be a crazy month with weddings and graduations and prom. And so we do have a few that aren't going to be able to make it, but have been great working with me and are, you know, can't wait to get started in June. But it should be, it should be a great event. We're also looking at doing a potential holiday market sometime in November, December. Been working with Melinda Winchester, the downtown development specialist, on all of these events very closely. And we're looking at tying them together with holiday parade, downtown promotional ideas. So it should be a really, a great time of year. Of course, we love local business promotions, and we are expecting continued vendor growth. And there's been a great community support network. I told Mark the other day, I said, it's great when you come to work and you have two emails in your inbox from people you have no idea who they are, but they're just telling you that they're so excited for the farmer's market because they've just been waiting, you know, to be able to try their hand at it or they've heard so many good things or they're excited about all the products and variety this year. So that's a great way to, you know, start your week, so. With that being said, it'll take us to some of the events that we're looking at for the rest of the summer. Most of you familiar with Downtown After Dinner, Live on Broadway, as it's been called in years past. And as Mark said, we've hit the streets, Melinda and I have hit the streets, and tried to get to very, well, as many people as we can in the amount of time that we've had. Like I said, I'm sure there are still more. But we've tried to really take note of what concerns there are out there from the businesses as well as customers, basically anybody that we run into. And as you know, there are many sides to the story and lots of different opinions on whether it should stay, go, or evolve. And this is just our take on the general consensus and where we see things going. With that said, I'm introducing Live on the River, Sounds of Summer, is what we would like to call that. It's a three-part series that's themed. And we are proposing going from Third, just inside of Third, to the river. How did we come to this conclusion? The first thing we did is really getting back to Paducah's roots, viewing the river as the backyard and the backbone of Paducah, what Paducah was created on and expanded outward from. And also with riverfront development, where the future of Paducah may be going. We're considering from Jefferson to Kentucky, just inside of Third Street, with expanded options on Second Street. Like I said, we've talked to many of the businesses out to Fifth. And while there are differing opinions, the general consensus really would like to see continued on Broadway, but just inside of Third so that you don't have to shut down the streets as well as taking into consideration Second Street over towards Kentucky so that we don't leave some of those businesses out. Some of the concerns that we've taken into account are things that local businesses have wanted. They wanted more traffic flow, more pedestrian flow. Quality over quantity. In years past, there have been so many bans out there, competing sometimes with the... In years past, there have been so many bans out there, competing sometimes with the restaurant music that's going on. We've just heard lots of concerns that it becomes overpowering. And not, I guess, the general consensus is not so much about providing bans as it is a family-friendly environment where people will want to come and hang out and spend time downtown. We're looking at incorporating more, incorporating more business initiatives for downtown development. This is something that we've had a lot of support from the businesses that have said, you know, if it's, if it's something that will be a positive for them, they will keep their doors open. And in a very positive light. But if it's not something, there are, you know, there are different, I guess, businesses that it would benefit more to keep their doors open versus maybe, let's say, a floral shop or the tuxedo store or something like that where it may not be as beneficial. And again, that's where Melinda comes in as well, and she's working on a lot of promotions for the businesses during this time as well as during the day on Saturdays and as well as kind of partnering with me on the farmers' market on Saturday mornings. And again, like I said, the request has been less bans and a more family-friendly atmosphere. So I guess, why look at this more closely? I think one of the most important reasons is because there has been so much discussion on Broadway or Downtown After Dinner and where should it go from here. I think it's something that's been a great part of Paducah's history, and it's well-loved and received by many people that are here. But it's just a natural cycle, I think, for events that have gone on so long. They are very cyclical. They go up and down. So I think it's very important to keep a downtown event fresh. We're also looking at drawing people to the downtown. That's, that's one of the reasons why we're also looking at from Third to the river. Melinda has been more direct, has been directly looking at the businesses one by one and the vacant buildings versus the businesses that are open, the ones that can benefit from certain events right now. And so we're taking that all into account when we do this. But one of the things that this would allow us to do would be to expand, I guess, this event area out a bit more. And I will say, Melinda is there to, to fill in the gaps, to work with the businesses. I think there were two that we, on just north of Third, is the barbecue and more, and then the Joe's Baskets. And we both have plans in place to work with them as well and even offer businesses the option to come down and promote their business at the event. But Melinda can speak to that more. She has a lot of great promotional plans in place for these businesses so that nobody feels like they're being, I guess, left behind. So again, we're taking into consideration downtown development. And then we're also looking towards the riverfront development and what that can mean for Paducah. And as the years go by and that's developed further, how that can enhance Paducah. And this will allow a good springboard for the future. The first date we have is June 21st, and we're calling it Sounds of the Classics. We'd like to feature instrumental music, solo duo and trio acoustic acts. We're still going with Saturday, 6 to 9 p.m. Potential ideas for this include orchestra participation, bell choirs, involving local music stores. At each one of these, there will be like a kids' corner with standard, I guess, events and small features for, for kids to enjoy as well, so that it's very family-friendly. But there are, there are so many ideas, and we've had a lot of people with calls from the community that, you know, would like to be a part of, of these different days. So there's a lot, there's a lot more to expand on there, too. The second date would be July 19th, Sounds of Paducah. This, you know, in getting calls, it's, it's been very hard not to notice that there are so many wonderful youth acts that are in Paducah. And I'd really like to promote the children in the area or any youth by kind of featuring them. And that's what I'd like Sounds of Paducah to be about. You know, potential ideas, you could have City and County School drum line competitions. I've had interest from Starfish Orphan Ministry performers. We have so many dance programs, and there are some great businesses that do work with a lot of youth programs. Mayfield Cheerleaders, Children's Choirs. There are just, there are so many here. You could go on and on. But I think that would be a great event and bring a different demographic downtown, And our last date would be August 2nd, Sounds of the South. Like I said, this is a three-part series, Sounds of the Summer, and each one has a theme. And in doing this, the thought was behind, you know, it's, it's quality over quantity. Also, it's something that people can put on their calendar as a date and start to get excited about. It becomes a, like a novelty of, you know, an experience. Hey, let's go down here for this, or my kid's going to be down here, you know, at the end of this month. But for Sounds of the South, August 2nd, it's really kind of a unique opportunity. That's also the same night as the Big Brown Truck Pull, and they've really expressed an interest in partnering with us to put on a great event that could be bigger than what either one of us could do alone. And they do this event to benefit, benefit the Special Olympics. So we would like to feature some type of a country music concert and use Wilson Stage. They provide food vendors. And then additional ideas, Sounds of the South in the summer, we've looked at doing a PIR race car demonstration downtown, have local motorsports stores featured come out and, you know, let people look at their ATVs and outdoor, you know, vehicles, partner potentially with Hoopers, any other local outdoor stores. Looking at, oops, the last one was just simply looking at having the National Guard come down. They had to do like a ropes course, just things that are very outdoorsy and again, would attract a little bit of a different demographic downtown that might really get on board with the Big Brown Truck Pull. And I, and I think they're really excited about the possibility just because to get the message out for Special Olympics and what a good charity they put on. With that, we will move to the last, introducing the Riverfront Concert Series. This is the concert series that stands alone on Thursday nights, and we've selected three dates this year, Thursdays from 6 to 8 p.m. This is strictly a concert, and those dates are June 26th, July 10th, and July 24th. And these Thursdays actually alternate with the weeks that would be the Live on the River. So there is a stretch, and you have to include the Fourth of July in there, too, as well, and the fireworks, which I didn't put in this presentation. But there's always something going on in downtown Paducah each week and even throughout the day on every Saturday. I know Melinda is working with the downtown businesses. I've been to several meetings. And we're looking at putting together, we've already talked to some of the carriage drivers, to basically start creating direct links between the downtown businesses and the farmers market by doing loops through there, you know, to try to create pedestrian flow and visibility between the two. She's going to be looking at doing a potential promotion with the Eight Weeks of Summer on Saturdays, where she'll be working with promoting the downtown businesses throughout the day on Saturdays. And then, of course, we'll have, some of the Saturdays will fall with Live on the River. And then our last meeting, we met with a group of the businesses on Second Street, and they're looking at what we can do to promote kind of Paducah After Dark. From nine o'clock on, a lot of the restaurants start their entertainment, their bands. And like I said, we're really trying to work hard to promote everybody and try to piggyback on each other as much as we can to spread the word about what's going on downtown so that if you're there in the morning, or you're there at midday, or you're there in the evening, or you're there later at night, there's always something that is positive, you know, going on and to take advantage of. So it all just basically comes down to collaboration. Promote Paducah by engaging Life on the River with the Farmers Market, the Riverfront Concert Series, and Live on the River, and then, of course, Paducah as a support system. And that's it. Are there any questions?
Well, you've been really busy.
Yeah. Yeah. But it's been, it's been a really, it's really, really positive, good experience, so.
I don't have any, any questions for you. I must say, though, that this looks really, really good. And I've shared this, that I was very excited to see what you came up with. I have also concern about the very thing that you mentioned. Melinda is currently putting together special promotions where that those shop owners up the block doesn't feel left out. That's, that's important.
Absolutely.
Because they are stakeholders there.
Absolutely.
If they're going to put on an event, just want to make sure that they have an avenue to promote themselves and increase their bottom line as well.
I completely agree with you.
So I guess we'll, I guess that's a conversation or maybe a presentation or email or something.
Yeah. Melinda's at a conference this week, but I know that she, she would love to speak to that, too, because we, we've, that's been utmost in our minds as we've been walking the downtown streets, you know. It's hard to accommodate everybody, but we are trying our best to hear everyone's concerns and then try to put in a formula to come up with something that can, that can, you know, try to benefit everybody the best that we can.
See, that's the perfect definition of politics right there. That's the way it's supposed to be, right there. It's gotten twisted.
I think this all looks great. I just have to say that I did get some feedback from a business on Fourth Street that wanted me to encourage you to include them. It sounds like you've talked to them quite a bit. You're trying to do that so we could tell them that, that, you know, you have been meeting with them.
Yeah. And, and we, as soon as Melinda gets back, I mean, we plan to be out there again. Like I said, those promotions are underway. We've really been trying to just, until the presentation, you know, just kind of, I guess, kind of keep things under wraps until, we just want to make sure we had all our information, you know, straight before we give it to people because they, you don't want to have to take anything back, but...
What's the reason not to include Fourth Street is because of the traffic flow and just expanding it so much more?
Yeah. And I, I think that we, Melinda has looked, and we've, we've discussed this, too. I mean, there are two businesses right now there and that potentially could benefit from, you know, extending it. But there are lots of buildings that are vacant. There are lots of buildings that it wouldn't apply to that might be, you know, the type of business. And so at this time, in addition to that, you know, we would have to close down both of the highways there. And just looking at kind of, I guess, pedestrian flow and traffic flow, we actually looked at it in a way as a positive because some of the complaints that we've had and concerns, you know, are people having to walk too far, I guess, to get to, to an event and to get to downtown. Or if you do close off streets, then if people are just trying to make it downtown, if they aren't coming to the event, a lot of times the business owners will say, well, they won't, they won't even bother coming downtown because they have to walk a certain distance or... So we're hoping, you know, even if we do that, and Melinda can work with the businesses that are just beyond Third, you know, that people will park along the street there. They can do sidewalk sales. There's a number of, of different things that they can do to really, you know, get that foot traffic into their stores. But Melinda can speak more about that. And then the other, the other idea behind this is using the river, again, going back to the river and using it as the backyard for the downtown and growing from that, not trying to isolate anybody, but kind of expand out to incorporate more of the downtown businesses Broadway, but then spreading out, you know, a little bit more so that some of the other businesses can take advantage of the event as well.
I, I think I probably received the same email that Commissioner Wilson did, but my question is, is Broadway from Third going, from Third to the river going to be closed completely to traffic? Okay. I could have just, there was a little confusion. It said increase more traffic flow, and I'm thinking, okay.
They just mean, it just meant like increase.
Pedestrian traffic flow?
Pedestrian traffic flow, and I guess, traffic flow up to that point.
Okay. But it will be closed from Third to the riverfront?
Yeah.
And Jefferson to Kentucky?
Like Kentucky there.
Okay. Second. Okay.
So this, this, this design, this layout, are opening up, but not having this street because you're supposed to the backyard, to the river. That's where you want to go.
Right. And using it like, you know, using it like it is a backyard. Now, that's not to say that everything's going to be concentrated, you know, on the other side of the flood wall or all down here in a lump. We are going to take advantage of, you know, the grid pattern of the streets and having, you know, smaller performers, entertainment throughout the blocks as well. But it, it will just kind of, I guess, support the idea of the river as backyard there.
Something that I see at a lot of places that I've been are the chair massages.
Yeah.
I think we should have those down there.
I think so, too.
We should have.
I think so, too, on the street, yes.
Not the, no, I mean, they're massage therapists.
Yeah.
It's great to have.
Thanks, Molly.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
As a matter of fact, I saw that in Paris last week. All right. We'll go on to our municipal order. Commissioner Abraham, please.
I move that a municipal order entitled a municipal order authorizing the execution of a mutual release of any and all claims with Infinity Plastic Technologies Incorporated and Infinity Media Incorporated be adopted.
Second. Okay.
You have a agenda action sheet. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer this, but essentially it represents a separation between the former tenant of that building and the city and McCracken County respectively, freeze the building up for other marketing and options for occupancy coming forward. So it's a, it's a significant move. I will say that lease payments were made, I believe, through January, and we're anticipating a relatively short period of time during which monthly lease payments would not be made. More to follow on that.
Positive.
Yes, very.
Okay. Any discussion? City Clerk, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kaler?
Aye. Commissioner Gault, please.
I move that a municipal order entitled a municipal order authorizing the mayor to execute an application in all documents relating to same to obtain a grant through the Kentucky Housing Corporation's GAAP financing pool in the amount of $108,000 to benefit the Fountain Avenue Neighborhood Revitalization Project be adopted.
Second.
Steve?
Good evening.
Hi.
In 2009, we received funds for the GAAP program, built two houses at that time. Our latest program through Kentucky Housing was the Home Program, which we're actually finishing up our sixth house now. This will be for four new homes using the GAAP financing mechanism. If we were to get the grant, we'll obviously have to go back out, ask for a request proposal from a local bank, and then come back before the commission at a later date. But this is... But this is for four new homes.
Okay, sounds good.
I like your shirt.
Thank you, sir.
Little shirt.
That's a nice shirt. Don't leave that laying around.
Probably wouldn't fit.
All right, City Clerk, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kaler?
Aye.
Okay, ordinances adoptions, Commissioner Rhodes, please.
I feel rather put upon that.
Oh, you've got the two page.
Commissioner Gault didn't get to read this, since she got to introduce it. I think that's pretty tacky, that you don't get to read it since you introduced it. So you all may decide you wanna take a short nap while I read this. It says, "I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, 'An Ordinance of the City of Paducah, Kentucky Authorizing the Issuance of General Obligation Refunding Bonds, Series 2014A, in the aggregate principal amount of $5,765,000, subject to a permitted adjustment increasing or decreasing the size of said bonds by up to $575,000 to currently refund the outstanding City of Paducah, Kentucky taxable general obligation Build America Bonds, Series 2010, Build America Bonds-Direct Payment, the proceeds of which were used to finance the costs of various public projects within the City of Paducah, Kentucky, authorizing designated officers to execute and deliver the bonds, providing for the payment and security of the bonds, creating a bond payment fund, maintaining the heretofore creating sinking fund, authorizing the acceptance of the bonds, the bids of the bonds, purchaser or purchasers for the purchase of the bonds, and repeating inconsistent ordinances." This ordinance is summarized as follows. The ordinance authorizes the issuance of general obligation bonds designated as Series 2014A in the approximate principal amount of $5,765,000, the bonds, by the City of Paducah, Kentucky, the city. The bonds are to be issued for the purpose of currently refunding the outstanding City of Paducah, Kentucky taxable general obligation Build America Bonds, Series 2010, Build America Bonds-Direct Payment. The prior bonds, the proceeds of which were used to finance various public projects within the city, including the construction of the Greenway Trail, the construction of a replacement for the existing Noble Park parking lot, and construction for related appurtenances, the resurfacing of city streets, the acquisition and installation of generators throughout the city, the acquisition, installation of traffic signals, the acquisition of the Executive Inn and related appurtenances, and the construction and installation of public improvements on a portion of the site thereof. The acquisition and construction of Air Dome Pavilion, the acquisition of real property for the use of a sports park, and acquisitions of such additional improvements in substitution of any of the foregoing were identified, as were identified, in the budget of the city adopted for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2010, collectively, the project. Provisions are made in the ordinance for the payment of bonds and the security therefore for the application of the proceeds of the bonds, for the establishment of the bond payment funds, for the maintenance of the previously established sinking fund, and for certain conveniences of the city with respect to the bonds. The bonds are to be sold at the public competitive sale and shall mature or be subject to mandatory sinking fund redemption in varying amounts on March 1st of each of the years 2015 through 2030, when I'll be 93 years old. The bonds will pledge the full faith and credit of the City of Paducah and provisions made for the collection of a tax to pay for the principal of and the interest on the bonds, subject to the credits, of certain credits, as provided in Section 8 of the ordinance, as required by KRS 83A-060, and the following, Section 7 of the ordinance is set forth in this entirety. Section 7, General Obligation. The bonds shall be full general obligations of the city and for the payment of said bonds, the interest thereon, the full faith, credit, and revenue of the city as hereby pledged for the prompt payment thereof. During the period the bonds are outstanding, there should be, and there hereby is levied on all the taxable property in the city in addition to all of the taxes without limitation as to rate, a direct tax annually in an amount sufficient to pay the principal and the interest on the bonds when it is due, it being thereby found and determined that the current tax rates are all within applicable limitations. Said tax is hereby ordered and computed, certified and levied, and extended upon the tax duplicate and collected by the same officers in the same manner and at the same time that taxes for general purposes for each of the said years are certified, extended, and collected. Said taxes shall be placed for and in preference to all other items and for the full amount thereof provided, however, that in each year to the extent that the other lawfully available funds of the city are available for the payment of the bonds, including amounts available under the lease and under the appropriated for such purpose. The amount of such direct tax upon all of the taxable property in the city shall be reduced by the amount of such other funds so available and appropriate.
Second. With notes on this, it just saves us some money.
Yes, the bottom line, but it's 210,000 bucks.
Right.
Well, I'm happy for that. Though I don't think I'll probably be around to see us pay them all off. I just don't think that'll happen.
Well, you never know.
I hope I'm not here.
You keep your weight down. You might make it.
Thank you, Tammy. Appreciate it.
All right, City Clerk.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kaler?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, 'An Ordinance Authorizing the Mayor to Execute a Reimbursement Agreement with the Electric Plant Board of the City of Paducah, Kentucky, DBA Paducah Power System, for the electrical construction related to the Olivet Church Roadway Improvement Project.' This ordinance is summarized as follows. That the City of Paducah hereby authorizes the mayor to execute a reimbursement agreement between the Electric Plant Board of the City of Paducah, Kentucky, DBA Paducah Power System, and the City of Paducah, Kentucky, for reimbursement for actual labor and material necessary for electrical construction to complete the Olivet Church Roadway Improvement Project, estimated at $225,000. In the event the total invoice amount exceeds the estimated amount required to complete said project, the city hereby authorizes the Finance Director to issue payment for the actual total cost to Paducah Power System.
Second.
Okay, moving forward with that project, that's good. City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kaler?
Aye.
Commissioner Abraham, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, 'An Ordinance Authorizing the Mayor to Execute a Reimbursement Agreement with Paducah-McCracken County Joint Sewer Agency for Sanitary Sewer Construction Related to the Olivet Church Roadway Improvement Project.' This ordinance is summarized as follows. The City of Paducah hereby authorizes the mayor to execute a reimbursement agreement between Paducah-McCracken County Joint Sewer Agency and the City of Paducah, Kentucky, for reimbursement for sanitary sewer construction work related to the Olivet Church Roadway Improvement Project, estimated at $304,240. In the event the total invoice amount exceeds the estimated amount required to complete the said project, the city hereby authorizes the Finance Director to issue payment for the actual total cost incurred by Paducah-McCracken County Joint Sewer Agency.
Second. You all discussed all these last week, so.
City Clerk, I'll be abstaining as I sit on the Joint Sewer Agency Board.
Okay, City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Sorry, sorry.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kaler?
Aye.
She stuck with that, didn't she?
No.
Remember that time when I said that, I was stuck with it? You told me I was stuck with it.
I abstained on the other side, too, so.
Commissioner Gault, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, 'An Ordinance Authorizing the Finance Director to Pay AES Environmental LLC for the Disposal of Household Hazardous Waste Collected During the City-City Free Cleanup Day.' This ordinance is summarized as follows. That the Finance Director hereby authorize to pay AES Environmental LLC in the amount of $23,065.40 for the disposal of household hazardous waste collected during the City-City Free Cleanup Day.
Second.
Okay. City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kaler?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes, please.
All right. So I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, 'An Ordinance Providing for the Closing of a Portion of Ridgewood Street Between Topeka Avenue and Olympia Avenue, and Authorizing the Mayor to Execute All Documents Relating to Same.' This ordinance is summarized as follows. That the City of Paducah hereby authorizes the closing of a portion of Ridgewood Street between Topeka Avenue and Olympia Avenue, and authorizes the mayor to execute all documents necessary to complete the transfer of property to the property owners in rebutting the public ways to be closed.
Second. City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kaler?
Aye.
We're down to City Manager's report.
So, Mina, we have our budget presentation next Tuesday. We're setting a special time for the meeting at 4:00. It will be at the Julian Carroll Convention Center. I forget what room. Excuse me? Kennedy Room, thank you. We will also have an agenda with several business items on there that day. Tried to keep that as small as we can, but we have a few that we need to act on. So, the only other thing, I'd ask for a very brief executive session on the subject of economic development.
Okay, any Commissioner comments tonight?
Other than last, this past Saturday was absolutely beautiful in the city. There were so many things going on. Most folks that I talked to, you know, dabbled here, went over there. The weather participated greatly. And so it was just a nice day. It was a nice day.
And of course, the Lower Town Art Festival was last weekend, and that went well.
Great weather.
Crawfish boil was great.
That was the last weekend.
You eat crawfish?
Me?
Commissioner?
Yeah, you like crawdads? Eat them, fish with them, why not?
Obviously, yeah. Crawfish, yeah.
I'd just like to mention, today I represented the city at a couple of different things. And one was Banterah Bank has gifted to Paducah Habitat for Humanity a building, I think it's at 313 Broadway, where they're gonna be moving to and opening up a resale store. So they're very excited about that and the opportunity to be downtown and bring some more traffic downtown. And then, right after that, Paducah Community Ministries received a $300,000 grant from the Eckstein Family Foundation for their new building, which is on Park Avenue, the old Family Dollar Store. And they're gonna be renovating that as a warming, hopefully to be a warming center and for their kitchen. So there are some really nice programs going on in our community to help those that need help.
That's a great location, too.
Mm-hmm, really is.
And is that, is that like a grant they were given to match? Or is it just?
It was a grant, but they're kicking off a fundraising campaign, but this was a gift to them. Well, they didn't mention a challenge. It was a gift to them from the Eckstein Family Foundation. And then the Board announced that they would be launching a capital campaign to finish the cost of renovating that building.
Today, and I didn't understand the whole, this was just in little snippets at the Anti-Bullying Task Force meeting, which followed.
Yes.
That. They talked about the Carson Meyer $300,000 to purchase the building for the community kitchen, and then the Ray and Kay Eckstein Charitable, which was to actually finish it out.
Another $300,000.
Another $300,000. But apparently, there is a, the challenge or the other capital campaign will also kick in for some, essentially, shelter. Because it talked about the, there is no more shelter for women and children at the Housing Authority, and I think we all received those letters. And they talked about that that would become part of.
I didn't understand that building.
That's what I was asking.
I think that building would, would take the place of the warming shelters that rotated around this summer. That they hoped to expand to be able to do more to help with that. I didn't, I don't think that was part of that project there. I mean, it was more of an expansion of it. But they plan to put in showers and washer and dryer. And it would be a warming center at night where it's the kitchen during the day. But yes, they did talk about that.
And it was.
Only got snippets, so that's why I'm asking.
It would be even more because it would be warming, cooling.
Right.
It would also provide life skills training.
Yes, they plan to put in computers and to do some things to help. And I don't think anybody would permanently be housed there. It would just be for the warming and cooling center.
So it's a great project.
It's a great project.
All right, we have an executive session. We will not be coming back for any decisions, so meetings adjourned.
I need to read it.
Yes, please.
I move that the Board go into closed session for discussion of matters pertaining to the following topic. A specific proposal by a business entity where public discussion of the subject matter would jeopardize the location, retention, expansion, or upgrading of a business entity as permitted by KRS 618101G.
Second.
All right, City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kaler?
Aye.
Aye.